Jill, when I left 2016, we were going to send a little in Robertson County Schools for an order. Please silence your cell phones and electronic devices. And as we have a moment of silence tonight, we have a person in the East Robertson area. That was lost a couple of weeks ago, Todd Young. If you all would remember, he has some ties to East Robertson School with his family. So if you all remember that family, as we have a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance which will be delivered in the following moments? Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Reddick, would you please read our missions and vision statements?
Students, students have their achievements, thus being the focus of our every meeting, our every budget, our every decision. The mission and vision statements are the Robertson County School system of expressions of what we believe and what we expect. We believe our mission is to ensure each student is prepared to succeed in life. Our vision is that Robertson County Schools will enable all students to reach and exceed high academic and career standards while empowering them to succeed in technologically advanced and cultured and nourished society.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I would like to introduce someone to you tonight. I would like to introduce our student board member, Ms. Emma Frigman. Emma comes to us from Springfield High School. She is a member of the National Honor Society, the choir, student body president, beta club, FBLA, junior civitan. Her mother, Jill Frigman, is the second grade teacher at Cooperstown Elementary. So we are happy to have Emma. She plans, when she graduates, she plans to attend the University of Tennessee at Knoxville and become an orthopedic surgeon. So we are very happy. Okay, we'll move on to our items on the consent agenda. Board members, you have seen these items. What's your pleasure?
There's a purple two. Second.
Motion by Mr. Crockett and a second by Mr. White. No, excuse me, Mr. Payne. Sorry. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approval, make it known by saying aye. Or aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes. I will move on to our recognition of student, teacher, and school achievements. Do we have any of those?
Madam Chairman, we have some students that have done some tremendous things, and we know they're way over their age, but we want to wait until they're recognized.
One of them's here. One of them's here. A nine is here.
Well, I think you are. I hope Mr. Gregory come up and just tell you what an outstanding young man this fellow is. I mean, he was here once before when he won the awards, and now he's back as a national, not a state winner, not a local, a national winner. And nothing getting better than that. So best of thousand people showed up at that thing, and you beat them off.
There were twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand.
Well, speaking about the GSR.
He's one of the M-POP two speaking contests for FBLA. A great honor. I was able to see that on streaming on the web. They had the convention streaming, and I got home just in time to see y'all walk out on the stage. And I had a good time. I was watching his face because they started at like 10th place, and they kept working their way down. And it's like you respect your name, but they weren't calling, you know? So you kept looking at stuff like, oh, I think I might just win this. It was pretty fun to watch him on stage, and we're very proud of you and that accomplishment. I think you won $15,000. Is that right?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred.
You want to give her the extra three, then?
But we are very proud of you. You know, it seems like everything you do, you do a great job at it, and you're going to be a great success. We're proud of you. Hope that you come back and be a part of our community whenever you get new school and help us to make Robertson County a great place.
Thank you very much. Thank you. It was, I was, I've never been a part of FBLA before. I kind of dodged Miss Fockham about it because I did mock trial. And March, she told me, I went ahead and signed you up for a competition. I didn't know why I would have signed me up, or I'd never done it before, so I was terrified. But I went to the regionals, and I went for a state, and it was, it was a lot of fun. But, you know, what I want to say tonight is, I had the pleasure of going to the boys' state program here this past year. And while there, they're really focused on the point of friendship and teamwork and the value of community. And, you know, that was something that has always been a theme in all of our lives, especially in a small town. But they really pushed it. And I kind of went out on a limb, that's why I'd like to run for governor of Boys State. And I ended up winning the election, and so I won that, and that was a lot of fun. And then they kicked me to go to Boys Nation, so I'll do that at the end of this month. The reason why I bring that up is because, you know, I would have won that election had it not been for the guys there that helped me campaign. And back home on this end, you know, the things that I do and the things that I strive, I don't do them for my own edification, but I do it for my community. And it really means a lot to me to have the support from all of you guys standing behind me and, you know, encouraging me to do good things. So I'm really here to say thank you for all the things you've done for me. So thank you all.
When you are governor at Boys State, is anything else done with that?
Uh, that's a weird question. We have, you know, you do, your big inauguration, which was fun, and I was sworn in. And that's kind of like I'm at the disposal of the American Legion. I make a phone call and say, can you be here and do this? And, you know, the funny thing about it is put me in an odd position because being picked up at Boys Nation as a senator there, I'm kind of breaking some laws of being a governor and a senator. But in doing that, when I
You're not the first to do it.
But in doing that, I hope to run for president of Boys Nation. And if I get elected president, I'll have to give up my position as the governor. So I don't know how long I'll be, you know, if I get elected, Lord willing, but it's all up in the air, so.
Are there any scholarships involved with any of that?
I got a full ride to Tennessee, Ted.
That's what I'm looking for.
I just, I, he's in office. I didn't know you were coming tonight. I guess that kind of slipped up on me, but we want to do a presentation and recognize you at our office board meeting. And of course, he's been recognized for, and Dr. Smith, his musical talent, he sings opera, and he is absolutely fantastic. Everything he does, I think you're also the music leader of your church.
The music ministry is of the heavenly heavens.
And he does a lot of great things in his life, and he's got a great future. And don't forget us when you get to be not just president of Boys, but you may, I see you going a long way from here.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations on everything.
Thank you very much.
I did think I heard him say he was terrified when she signed him up for something. I can't imagine you ever being here. Not that I've seen a few of them, anyway, we're proud.
Thank you very much.
Okay, recognition of Advanced Dad Accreditation in Robertson County Schools.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, we have a distinguished guest that's a Dr. Connie Smith, who is with the Advanced Dad, and of course, Dr. Locke, they want to join our faculty, help spearhead this in our district. But Dr. Connie Smith is from Tote, sub-Arkansas. That's how she pronounces it, I think. And she's very proud of that fact. I've known her my entire time in Tennessee, just a great friend, and has really worked diligently to help us get through this process with our secondary schools, middle and high. And this coming year, we're going to take care of our elementary schools so that we will have every school in Robertson County accredited by the Advanced Dad program. And that's something that kids can tell the folks when they graduate or apply for a scholarship or apply to a university, that they graduate from an accredited school. It's an outside, we do a self-study, you're all program colleagues, and then after the self-study, we have an extra team come in and do an evaluation, and then we determine whether or not we've met the accreditation standards. Have you provided a blueprint to ensure that we talk to them? With that being said, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, our principals aren't here, but a lot of them are vacations.
Well, thank you, Secretary Timbit, and Madam Chairman, board members. Thank you, Dr. Locke. Thanks for standing behind me as always. We've done that for many years. What a blessing. Sorry the young man's gone. What a blessing. I wish he was running for president of the United States. I go to Baptist church too, and I like him. But thank you for allowing me to come and be with you in this beautiful place. I heard you were having a ribbon cutting, and Ella Binsom, Beverly's brother, has been my mentor for many, many years, and Marjorie Pike, and Jerome Pielas, and I've been coming to this county for a long time. I'm just honored to be here. This is a celebration of your success, becoming accredited with Advanced Dad. What that means is that we're in 50 states, and we have reciprocity with the 50 states, so your high school graduates can enter most universities and colleges without any extra hurdles, and that's what that means. So thank you for bringing your system back into accreditation. You've got 11 elementaries that we're going to schedule. I've been working with your great central office team, but I've raised most of them, but most of them are my students. I sound like the old woman of the sea, but I'm just thrilled to still be at it and in it. And I just wanted to say congratulations. Generally, when I worked for Governor Reddick as his Assistant Commissioner for Accountability, I really didn't have a lot of good news for systems. And actually, some of you may remember me, the last time I was here, it wasn't very much fun. So this is a fun event, and I just want to say congratulations for turning the system around and moving into the performance of student achievement that you've done, and it warrants a STEM approval that is nationally and international in 72 countries accredited. I want to tell you about our STEM certification, you know, that's science, technology, engineering, mathematics. I've got a school in mind here that I would like to get STEM certified. So I'll be talking with the boss, and Dr. Locke, and some of your supervisors. But just congratulations to you. I came over here, I've got to get home before dark because I can't sit at night, you know, we get on up there. But this, this community, you heard from a young man, has a warm place in my heart. So anything you need, I'm available here. And school board members, thank you for your service. I'm watching you in the form, I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay, Ms. Amy Fields, from the Fontaine Rouge.
Lovely thing I have, I'm going to invite you all to the new teacher breakfast, which will begin on August 1st at Springfield High School at 8:00 AM in their dining area. And we hope you come over here.
We'll move on to our personnel report.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, your certified boards in your packet, we've had a total of about 44 personnel actions on the certified side of the House. That's two leaves of absence, nine resignations, seven transfers, and 26 new hires. On the classified side of the House, we have a total of about 25 personnel actions, two retirements, four resignations, eight transfers, and 11 new hires. Subject your question, question section, let's do the personnel report.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Payne, on personnel report? Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the following positions. I'm going to assume that we should take these one at a time, one at a time.
Okay, the first one is the assistant principal job at Joe Burns High School. Joe Burns is much like East Robertson High School, they have a middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and they only have a high school principal and assistant principal. And this would give them some additional help with students, also with the influx, or not greatly, but with the numbers increasing in that school. This is something that was requested and something we feel that we're very beneficial for. Former principal also has been asking of us for some time. But I recommend that we create that position where it was in the school districts of us to do. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion of Mr. Hurd and a second by Mr. Payne. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approval of assistant principal at Joe Burns High School, make it known by saying aye. Or oppose, no. Motion passes.
We also listed for two additional school nurses in our budget, and it will bring all of our schools, that we will have a nurse for each school, and we'll have to share those nurses in a month. Something that's been needed for some time with all of the students that we serve, with health needs and special needs. So every single school in Robertson County that has a full-time nurse, wants to create a position.
We've approved that request. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion of Mr. Payne, second by Mr. Hurd. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approval of the two school nurses, make it known by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes.
The next item I have is creation of a webmaster. We have a great set of software that we can use now for our webpages, and we want our webpages not just to go to the central office or the school, we want it to go all the way down to the teacher level. And this takes quite a bit of work, I saw someone to monitor it to make sure we don't have people putting things they shouldn't put on, posting appropriate materials and that kind of thing. It's, it's much, much more than that, but Officer James Marshall, who has, he's been asking about this for two years. He just, he just cannot do it, he doesn't have the staff to do it, and it takes someone with the expertise to be able to monitor this system as large as ours and keep it current and keep that information flowing out to the public. You know, we need to get our good news out, like this young man winning a national competition, and we need to do more than just put a picture about him, we need to put a story on him of what I was doing in the community. And I think with this position, it will put your school system in much better light, not just here, but throughout the world. And when companies start looking into a website, they start looking into schools, that's how they determine whether or not they're going to okay in Robertson County. And we need, we need to promote ourselves and toot our own horn. This is a good way to break them and approve them.
Motion to approve.
Motion of Mr. Payne, second by Mr. White. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving the webmaster, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes.
The next item I have is assistant wide athletic director for Robertson County. Athletics are a big part of our students' lives. We have five high schools, we have three middle schools, and it's, it's something worse than more than you can imagine, is what takes place. Everything from transportation to getting to vaultings, front vaultings, to making sure that we communicate the information that needs, that's pertinent, it needs to go out as soon. But this too has a huge job description. I spend more time than I would like to spend on athletic issues, because they end up on my desk once they leave the school, and we don't have another person to intervene or do investigations or get statements from coaches, get statements from students, some things that brought to our attention. But I think this is something that's been requested for some time too. Lots of other schools should have this, and I've had this in every district I've been in, and it will benefit your athletic programs throughout the county in ways that you cannot imagine. I think we, I think we need to approve this position. And all of these positions were included in our question.
Motion to approve.
Motion of Mr. White, second by Mr. Crockett. Any questions or discussion?
The only question I have, when this was brought before the board, it was brought as a part-time, and we said we was going to see if we needed to move it up before time. At that time, we had, first, we had drawn up the assistant wide athletic director and safety coordinator. Now we've taken, what was going to be a part-time job to me was athletic safety, and we've made a safety coordinator. I still think we need to start out with a part-time athletic director.
You can certainly amend your motion to say that and make it a part-time. We get, that was my first recommendation, is that we put a part-time safety, a part-time athletic director. I will tell you, you could probably still do that, that's your choice. It's going to be a lot of work for both of those individuals, but that's a good starting point, at least. I was under the impression that I wanted a full-time athletic director, district wide. But that many high schools and that many middle schools, it'll be a lot to keep up with your part-time.
The athletic director that I talked to in Florida, he had like five different hats he was wearing, as well as doing athletics, he did several other things. And we've got a person who's going to be dedicated to athletics. If that person were to come to us and tell us that, you know, it's too much of a part-time, I could see that time going full-time, but I think we need to find out first because the other two athletic directors that I talked to, they had told me that you would have to have other things to do, than just doing athletics. One professional coordinator is DWSO, and he's one of rich. So that's just, that's my sense. I'd like to amend this job to say that it is a part-time job.
What you're going to do, your requirements, make a motion to amend, motion, I think the officer in order to part-time. You have a second, I think, and you go on that amendment.
He could withdraw his. It could be a motion.
Can I just say something first? That job is virtual. It's very expensive to me. I just have a hard time seeing somebody part-time doing that, if they're actually going to do everything within that job.
Where all of that job description comes from, Mr. Reed, if you remember? He gets some out of the head account?
I looked at several, yeah, I googled and found what I thought was the very best, and from the direction from what I heard about 209 and compliance issues and communication with the community, making sure, having Twitter, having, you know, a district athletics website, things that I had seen, I put those together in the job description.
And that's, it looks a lot like what a quarter's job was involved. That's the reason why you're part-time with you. It's not.
My only, my only thing was, when we first started talking about this, was if you do part-time, how do you figure, our athletics go year-round basically, so how do you figure what the part-time is? Is he working like so many days a week, spread out for the year? Is he working like six months, being, not working six months, or you know, part-time, you know, so? So I think that's the reason why I might get it for four times because athletics is in the summer now too, other than two hours a year.
I'm not a real athletic person, but it seems like maybe there's athletics going on all the time in schools. I don't see you let up on it, and I don't It just seems like
When you see all those job descriptions, you look at it, it's not a full job every day of somebody doing something. I don't see, yeah, one, two, three times only there's an athletic plan, but at the end of the year. That's, that's one thing. Verifying the eligibility, where your athletic directors at schools do that, you just got to make sure they do it right. And that's another spare ground.
The coaches will do that, report to him. They do the same thing every year, is reporting where their students are and he relates.
And when it comes to wins and work, I think that would be the best judgment, because I agree with you, with sports being year-round, because we get kids out there right now, you know, doing things right now. I think it's going to be one of those deals where it's had days and four days here and there, if it's done part-time.
It's going to be a busy job. I can tell you that because athletics is, you probably are not just fall football and winter basketball and soccer and all the other, track and field and all the other things that go on. Plus looking in to make sure that our facilities are pretty shifty. Of course, we are already in the process of trying to get the NADD in line. Not only that, we've got some floors, basketball floors and things of that nature. I know that's a building and grounds issue, but the thing we need to make sure that things are standard. It's going to be, whoever it is, it's going to have to work hard because we're going to give a vested interest, responsibilities for them to do. It happens, partial out of its time, two days a week or three days a week, depending on how many days you work with individuals, but part-time is part-time. I'm okay with whatever the board decides, but you're all a job to create and match all the fields.
I'm still, I don't know, this very many times, I'm still looking for that full-time person, just because I just, you know, I don't want that person, something happens today, well, the day was the day we lost. I mean, a lot, a lot of the situations too is not, you know, like all the things that the director talked about, a lot of things the director gets involved in now is for coaching situations that happen on a campus that an athletic person can't handle, you may bring it to the director, instead of like all five of those high schools bring it to the director. He comes to that director, then comes to him. You know, reading through the job description, there's a lot in there, but a lot of it is, like you said, going to be, you know, something else every day that's a problem or something that could be a problem in that particular school that that director has to oversee. So I'm still pushing for us to pull them.
Well, then why don't we go ahead and do the safety coordinator and the director there, and let them do most of those jobs? And that's what we're going to do, because all it is, is have that one line, and let them do the safety as well.
Well, you know, I
The safety person, no, yeah.
And you're It's a part-time, yes. And that works, because I was running around looking at our playgrounds before school starts, there's no cushion material under the swings, there's not maintained proper for safe, for safe usage by students, things of that nature. Not only that, but our buildings, walk-throughs, to make sure that we don't have as many work complaints as we had in the past. And we have, they have declined, I will say, they have declined. But that has been under student services for years, and they really can't do all of that. Just a lot of work for either one of those positions. It's entirely up to you guys to create the position, you know. I don't know that I can do either one of them justice. I did recommend that additionally, but after we got to looking at what all the job descriptions call for, and our expectation of what these two individuals will do, or these two positions will do, it's, it's a lot of work. And so, and there was a spot that we're not crossing the floor there. Jill. So, again, I recommend, the first recommendation is for assistant wide athletic director. What's your opinion?
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
And a second already.
We didn't hear a second.
No, I hadn't heard a second. But I didn't, well, he said it, that's when he said, that's what I didn't hear.
You've been doing, why, you've been making that so You've been doing, you're waiting for a second, and then you vote on the amendment to the motion, or you can draw your motion, and talk over.
I'll stick with my motion, make it, amend the motion, make it part-time.
Mr. White has made a motion to amend, his motion to make this position part-time. Is there a second to that amendment? That motion has, White, a second, then we're back to our original motion. We have a motion on the floor to approve the Assistant White Athletic Director as presented. Any other questions or discussion?
Question called to.
Question's been called. All those in favor of approval, make it known by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, no.
No, no. Three, two.
We are.
Motion for.
Motion for. We need to, in fact, it's where one, we will move on.
Okay, Benefits Coordinator. The Benefits Coordinator is something that the Finance Department, and I've been talking about for a year or more. Ever since we've had the Affordable Health Care Act come out, it's conditional stress on the financial department at the County Department. And insurance is a, insurance, health insurance, getting a benefit, along with a lot of other benefits. And we are moving our folks over there, and quite honestly, they don't have the resources or manpower to take care of all, meet all the requirements that they should be meeting with those people. They did it last year, to me, they all did a heck of a job, getting all those 1095s ready, getting them out. I know it's been a, 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 but it is something that's needed. We talked about it, and at the budget committee, with the Finance Committee, to ensure, assumptions and business and respect of that, which is not, I do know there's a great need for this individual to be put in place, and I would recommend approval. Do we get a budget for that position?
Motion for approval.
Motion of Mr. Payne, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Crockett, any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approval of the Benefits Coordinator position, make it known by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes.
Nothing is more important than safety. I start every meeting I have with principals and people. Like a relevant person will tell you, location, 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 and sell them a house. I start at the same safety, safety, safety. Nothing matters, whether we have to win, we were to lose a student, or something happened that was unsafe in our schools. In the world we live in today, this is a much needed position. I think we can do it with a part-time version, stay during their days throughout the year. And my intentions are to get someone that has some experience in identifying safety hazards, and getting safety certified, to make sure that they understand the challenges that we have. And so I would recommend that you create this position as a part-time position. It may be something that you will want to move to a full-time in the future.
And you've heard this request, please your pleasure.
Motion approved.
Motion of Mr. Hurd, the second of Mr. Crockett. Any questions for discussion?
We want to go ahead and approve this, and advertise this when the legislature passes, and we don't know what we're gonna do with that question, if we're gonna burn it up, too, back there. Is this something that we should hold off, and say with that question? It's not a question that the Board can ask.
I really want to just spark some fire, I want to still work, get this still set, or get this still.
Who's doing the job, then?
What happened, the services, the oversight, someone's really done this, I think he's done that. We need someone filling through our buildings, identifying safety hazards, that's something. I think that would force those doctors, you'd be doing some job.
Any other questions?
And back to your question, Mr. White, come back later and make this other part-time position, and you can add into this one, you have a full-time person.
You've already hired someone.
I have hired.
Well, it sounds like you're ready to hire them tomorrow.
We'll advertise next year.
Right, I understand it, but it sounds like you need them right now. Then if we change it, and you brought somebody in part-time, who has no athletic background, then that's the only reason I mentioned that we might wanna hold off, till we decide. Board's pleasure, that's just my, my thought. Athletic Director, this one.
We wanna try it one more time, adding the Athletic Director onto this one.
That's a good motion, that's how I would.
I mean, I need force not to have an Athletic Director period of each.
Tell one more month, we can come back and offer, put some four stars, and then one more.
May I? It may take, you're talking about two different types of things, safety, and athletics. If you need a part-time Athletic Director, and a part-time Safety Director, you're still, you can have two part-time people. And one may have expertise in athletics, and the other may have expertise in the safety. But I'd rather not sacrifice trying to get that one person that may not have the expertise, trying to do too good a job.
That's the reason we asked for it to be separated into two part-time positions, this last meeting.
Can I ask, have a chance, can you pass, can you go back and revisit this part-time, the southern position that's plus recommended to a full-time? I'd be happy to change my recommendation to a part-time Athletic Director. I need them to get into football seasons, from star conferences. We need somebody.
Question. Question. I don't know.
We have a motion on the floor for a part-time Safety Coordinator.
Second.
We already have it. No, we're ready. Both, okay. All those in favor of approval of the Safety Coordinator part-time, make it known by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes.
I'll make the motion, and we have a part-time Assistant White Athletic Director.
I'm okay with that, by the way.
Okay, a motion, the motion's in vain by Mr. White, that we have a part-time Assistant White Athletic Director.
I'm okay with it.
Well, you know.
I'd like.
We don't have a second yet, so.
Second.
Second of.
Second.
Okay.
Now, my amendment, in time, in time, if we see that this needs to come in full-time position, because if the money already approved, you're saying, it may not be.
I have four for that. I'd be the first to stand up here and say, we need to go. I don't think it needs to be an amendment, because if we see it, we need to do it.
Right.
I don't think we have to have an amendment, I'm in agree with you. And the other thing is, we might not find anybody that wants it, in part-time.
Okay, so the motion's on the floor for a part-time Assistant White Athletic Director. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approval, make it known by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes.
The last one I had, and I determined, is the Position for Transportation Coordinator. Mr. Hyman, his work, he got some really exciting things coming out from our Transportation Department. I would ask him to be here tonight, but I found out he had to go to a conference, a Southeastern Conference. And he could elaborate more on what this person's duties and responsibilities are, but I can tell you, he has already, through mapping our district, cut our number of those routes, even though we thought we were gonna have to increase them. He has put in some measures that's going to create more accountability for people that we currently have in those positions that are at the Transportation Department. And I really believe he's trying to do a good job, and it's his request that you all create this Coordinator position for Transportation Department.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion of Mr. White, second of Mr. Payne. Questions or discussion? All those in favor of approval of the Transportation Coordinator, make it known by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to our expense comparison report.
Our expense comparison report is in the packet, it shows that we are at 90.67% revenues at the end of May, this is the May report. And last year, we were at 90.63%, so we are better this year than we were this time last year. The expenditures, we are 83 to 191 last year, we're at 81.15%, which is a decrease in the number. Well, definitely, 5,643,906 in 96 cents in revenues versus expenditures. Property tax has come in really well this year, we're over 100%, 101.1% as opposed to 103% this time last year. However, you see, the amount is more, simply because the tax rate increased last year. A penny now yields approximately $136,000 per penny on the tax rate. Sales tax is at 86.94%, it was at 86.80% last year, last year. And that continues to perform in a strong manner for our revenue, so we're pleased with the performance of our sales tax. I think it's even gonna get better with the businesses that are getting ready to open in the high house community, especially trucks now. The electricity, we are 89.47% now, as opposed to 91.80, 98% last year. 72.34% in diesel, as opposed to 78% at the end of May last year. Gasoline 64.60% as opposed to 95% last year. And insurance is 88.55% as opposed to 91.65% last year.
Are there any questions on the expense comparison report? And we will move on for approval of Tennessee's School Suisse for Equity Membership for 2016-17.
This is something that the Board has been wanting to do for several years now. You have actually benefited by being a member of this, and you've been lobbying for additional funding for specific school districts that are below a certain level of funding. And it's time to renew your membership this fiscal year, and I would recommend approval. Total amount is $4,009.
We have a motion to approve.
Motion for approval, please, second.
Motion of Mr. Crockett, second of Mr. Payne, any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approval, make it known by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to approval of Board Policy Revision, second reading for Section 6.
Okay, Ms. Mason, would you please come to the podium and speak to that?
I'm the Chair of Board Members tonight. I bring to you Section 6 of our Board Policy Manual for second reading. Again, I will just say that we had several staff members here, this group led by Don Madores, revealing the recommendations of TSBA, and we have received all of the recommendations of the organization, as well as our office, and I ask for your approval tonight.
We have a motion to approve, Section 6 on the second reading.
Motion for approval.
I'm on the side of one, was Mr. Payne. Second, Mr. Crockett. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approval, make it known by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes.
And aren't you excited? That has been a pass, and we appreciate it, and I mean, I know the supervisors have done their part on it, too, for thinking about some.
They did a terrific job, they were excited, and they're up there again.
Everybody's starting that day within next month.
We will, as TSBA members, we will have updates next month.
It will be, it's a good thing.
In fact, I've already stated, the TSBA, there were several pieces of legislation that were passed in the last year on the same, that were farthest from the policy. That's a never-ending test, it's a little bit off. This time, Madam Chairman?
Okay. Oh, there she is, she was hiding from me. Approval of 2016-17 Agreement Renewal for Administer School Nutrition Programs.
That is Chair of Board Members, this is the time of the year when we, once again, renew the agreement to administer this school nutrition program. If you look on the very first page of that form, it lists all the potential programs that are available to participate in. We've done the breakfast and the lunch program for several years. Last year, we added the after-school snack program, at Springfield High, at Springfield Middle. At Springfield High, it was a tremendous success, we were able to provide snacks after school to several other programs, so that went very well. The special milk program, we don't do, we only do that if you don't do breakfast and lunch. The Healthier U.S. School Challenge is a challenge that's been added this year, that we're going to be working with our schools. There are levels of achievement, bronze, silver, and gold. Each level comes with a small monetary reward, 500 at the bottom, it goes to 2,000. But that's something that's been added, that we're going to try to be working with. And then the Fresh Frieded Vegetable Program, for the fourth year, we have been awarded a grant for grants for elementary and junior college, and this provides fresh fried vegetables to these students, and they come with a diet different than breakfast and lunch. So it's been a tremendous success at those two schools. So I would ask that you approve, be agreeable to continue these programs for this coming year.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve.
Motion approved, second.
Motion of Mr. Hurd, second of Mr. Payne, any questions? All those in favor of approval, make it known by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to Approval of Community Eligibility Provision for the 2016-17 school year.
Two years ago, the eligibility provision was not available to every state. It was the first time that schools in Tennessee could participate. We started out, we had seven schools that met the 40% Director Certified numbers in order to be admitted into the program. Last year, we added another school, that was Crestview. And in looking at the numbers this year, we did have an additional school that we are recommending be placed into this provision, and that is Cooper Town Elementary. And that would make a total of nine of our schools in the CDP program. This is the program that provides breakfast at no cost, which we're doing at all the schools anyway. It also provides lunch at no cost, and it is our recommendation that that be approved.
My motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion of Mr. Hurd, second of Mr. Payne, any questions for second?
How far are we from all schools being accredited?
Right now, the bottom threshold is 40%, and that is not friggin' reduced, that is directly certified. When we think in terms of the friggin' reduced number, that is all the students who qualify for a direct certification and a paper application process. And in order to go into CDP, you have to have either in the school, or in a whole district. Or if you participate, the whole district would have to have 40% directly certified students. Right now, across the district, we're at about 35, 36, so close, but not close enough. And if you all remember, last month, we delayed even making a recommendation. There is a deal right now, that has come out of the Federal House, that is recommending that that 40% be raised to 60%. And if that happens, that's going to change CDP across the nation, and it would also change it even. But for right now, that's not going to be an estimate until sometime later in the year, if it is. if it is. And it won't go into effect for an additional year. So for one more year, we're at forty. And if I can just do a plug to everybody, I mean, voting is always important, but here in Robertson County, I mean, a lot depends on the election as to what's going to happen to C E P for our students. And you all, it's been a phenomenal program. It really has. Providing breakfast at no cost across the county has been a phenomenal program.
Any other questions for Ms. Taxi? All those in favor of approval make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes.
Thank you all so much.
You know how to remember, Ms. Taxi, is during the score appreciation week, we've got all those notes from the students, so many of them are planning for the free breakfast. I mean, that means a lot to me.
It really does. It's a lot to their parents.
Sure.
It really does. And thank you all so much for supporting that.
Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the M O U for School Resource Officer Program in Robertson County Sheriff's Department and City of Rooker.
The two memorizing of agreements are in your packet with those two agencies, Sheriff's Department, Robertson County, and Prewar Police Department. The Sheriff's Department stiff of this year in that it includes two, actually three additional, that's all. One will be able to function as a supervisor of the entire, sort of, group and sheriff. The other two, one will be placed at Joe Burns Elementary School and one at Cross Elementary School. The goal is to eventually be able to have a security version of each of our students. The Prewar Police Department provides student resource officers, officers for Prewar Middle School and Prewar High School. And they have not yet passed their budget, but there may be an amendment to the budget, our budget, later on when we find out exactly how much of an increase their police officer will receive. But I think our budget is enough in that line item to take care of any increase. So I would recommend approval of those two M O Us.
Motion to approve.
Motion of Mr. Payne, second of Mr. White. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approval make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Our next item is approval of Central Office Organizational Chart.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, we really needed to do this a long time ago to have a line and staff of what, whoever individual is in our office or in our school system, that we're there, or supported. So we, I thank Ms. Mason and the Central Office staff. She has done a lot of work, and I will ask her to come up and speak. This, any good organization has some type of organizational format or chart to go by, whether it's a private business or a public entity. And we really didn't have that. We had whoever we could talk to. Sometimes we were overlapping services, and sometimes things were getting miscommunicated between departments because we didn't have a line of staff to go to. And so I asked Ms. Mason to work on this, and this is a lot like some of the other districts that I have been in. It really works well. So I need your all's approval, and I would like to speak to, for you, one of the motion person.
Yeah, she can talk. Well, Mr. Davis did mention that every strong organization has a, has a strong organizational chart. And from time to time, in all of those organizations, things need to be realigned. New responsibilities in our situation have been from state. New programs are developed, and at times, they get shifted to a person where maybe that's not the most appropriate place. Maybe it's not the department where area of expertise lies. One example is several years ago, we received a family resource grant. And that family resource grant, for whatever reason, has been managed by the elementary education supervisor. Now, Melanie Dickerson would do a wonderful job at anything to give her. But her area of expertise and what we ask her to do here is develop a strong curriculum instruction and assessment program. We want her to be able to focus all of her time. A family resource center is a student service. And so if you take a look, that has been realigned there. We have worked to, to shift many of those areas so they are aligned with the department and the supervisor who can give it the best attention based on their job description and their area of expertise. Some other things that were a benefit, we, we had conversations that started several months ago, and we labeled those conversations an efficiency study. And we talked to every supervisor and every classified person in this office. And we looked at their formal job description, but we also said, what do you do? On a daily basis, what does your day look like? Because those formal job descriptions, if you ascend from the athletic director, they, they don't include all the bullets of what you do every single day. We took all of that information in aligning this, and we also had Joe Swan lead us in technology. And at that time, Mr. Walling came and took Joe Swan's place. Dr. Causey had been working with accountability and working with data. And look, in, in having the conversation during our efficiency study, we found that some things could be shifted to Louis Walling and, and Dr. Causey, who had been working at middle school to help Ms. Dickerson because she already had many elementary schools plus the supervising middle schools. He's going to be able to fully focus on curriculum instruction and assessment at the middle school level. I am extremely excited and pleased to have a strong curriculum and instruction and assessment team focusing solely on student learning, which is, I'm. One of a couple of other things that I will mention is if you look at the right-hand side of the organizational chart, I would call that our operational or administrative organizational side. If you look at the left-hand side, you'll note that it is our academic and instructional side. That makes for a nice division. The last thing that I will say is that this is a fluid document, and we intend to update it somewhat along through Board Policy. Hopefully not that often, but I will let you know that any additions that are made to it or any shifts will be brought up with the Board. So I ask for your consideration of this agreement organizational chart tonight, and if you entertain any questions or not.
Motion to approve. We have a motion of Mr. White for approval. Is there a second? Second of Mr. Crockett. Now, do we have any questions for Ms. Mason? I guess we don't. All those in favor of approval of the Central Office Organizational Chart make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Our next item is approval of a change order for the Walt Simon Elementary School project.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, that project is coming to fruition. We're in close to finishing. We are on the finish. Long time. Well, there's obviously some work to take place. Of course, the contract wasn't supposed to be completed until I helped, really, but we are going to be able to offer that thirty-one school. There'll still be some work on the outside of it. What this is about tonight is when we do a contract for a school project, we all have some monies that are set aside and catboards that we may need, may not need, it's called allowances. You don't know how much you're going to need for asphalt, you don't know how much you're going to need for other items of, 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 of,[1208.04] And so we, Mr. Morris and I have got to looking at how much money we have left in the allowances and I would recommend that we approve the change order. The funds are there and we need to be standing for the students. And this would be something that I think you'll be happy to be there whilst you're safe. This will be down to Mr. White, that everything else is complete. And I have Mr. Morris here. If you'd like to have him come up, he wants to give an update on things. Anyone want to talk about it? I would recommend the approval of the change.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. White. Second by Mr. Payne. Any questions?
I have one question. This lighting from previous camp could be a little awful, excuse me.
It's LED light. It's really good light. If you don't change the bulbs every year, it'd be up there for a couple of years and you won't have to go back and redo that. That's, and Mr. Morris may be better able to answer those questions behind me. So, I don't know.
The, the lighting these days is really directed by the National Electric Company and Energy Coats of the state. And National Coats require us to design to. And so that's why you're seeing, I don't have that cost for your front of you, but that's.
$5,967 for six lights.
It, we can go back and review that number if you'd like.
Well, I think it was at the only bid for that or?
In a situation like this, that they would go directly to their electrician that they have on the job and get that cost for it.
I mean, that, it just, it popped out there, just to be right in the corner.
Yeah, it's, there's a couple of things going on. Where that canopy's going is already done. And so they're having to come back and run that conduit through, pop it through the building and seal all that back up and then run it back through the existing, what is an existing building now, um, that is a new building to tie back in to the panels that are already built there. So they have to go in and work through the grid that's there. And so that does take a little bit more work to do.
I understand this should be a much powerful.
And they always do a change order, companies, they have the right to mark up the surface and.
You're going to mark up some of the stuff.
We know how that works sometimes.
There's no markup unless.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approval of the change order for Walthamet, make a non-mus say aye. Opposed, no. Motion passes. Our next item is update on building projects.
Perhaps the reason I asked Mr. Morris up here is that, I don't want you to be scared from me because I've had that discussion with Superintendent Mike Smith on the job. He assures, assures that we have, we are going to be in the building. So I asked Mr. Morris to assure you that this is going to be.
I will pass on the assurance from, from Mr. Smith and Steve Graves, Sergeant Anderson and Robert Anderson. Like Mr. Davis said, the contract was not set to be finished until Sep- end of September, early October. And they have really stepped up to make this happen, to get this work done. Um, they've assured us, we've been on site last week and week before, that it's going to be ready. So they, on the outside, they've got sidewalks that are starting. There's going to be curves. They're going to start the sidewalks and grassy areas on the 23rd. The base stone is going down on the 18th. And the canopies that are in the project are going to, are going to be on site next week and start at the end of next week. And the classroom lane, uh, which is the part that's really important, and this is a really big part, they've already gotten their above ceiling inspection completed and approved. So they've started installing ceiling tile. That's a huge part. Once they got that done, they can start closing that off. They are finishing their, their final code painting. They're there right now. The marking boards and tack boards have been installed. The HVAC units have been installed and are running. Um, the above ceiling for the rest of the building, the pod area, is going to be done Wednesday to this week. And once they get that, they can finish the ceilings up in there. They've started waxing the floors of the pod and they're going to move their way down into the classroom area. So they, um, they are ahead of schedule from their original contract and they will meet their date to get you guys in school for August 4th.
So a school teacher's question is, when can I get in my classroom? Is that going to?
No, 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 that's not, no, anyway. No, would that have any above ceiling inspections done? Uh, when they get that second one done Wednesday for the rest of the part, that could really almost be a temporary CO. And you know, temper is potential completion. It does potential completion, so we're very close to having that.
Mike feels very confident that we will be able to get a temporary, good occupancy for the last week of July. So that would give him about.
Yeah, yeah. There's still a lot of stuff that has to be moved from, from portables, as I would go with Mr. Davis, into there and I think a couple of those portals will be moved out of there as well. And then once, once school gets started, then the rest of the portables will get out of the way and then they'll finish the drive and finish up the exterior work over there.
Only thing I would like to say, I don't know how you actually keep Mike there, he's working. He does an excellent job of digging with the subs and coordinating things. It's been, it's been unbelievable what he has pulled off through weather and different things like this. I might be jinxing him right now, but he has done everything to do. He sure has.
He's done one of the best superintendents that I've ever worked with. He's good. He's great. Now, Madam Chairman, may I speak to the bid process for the middle school auditorium? May I give you a quick order of bids?
Yes, absolutely. The theater was set to bid last Thursday. We had, let's go all the way back to the beginning of the advertising process, sent out two advertisements to bid for the project. I called on multiple general contractors that we've worked with before and still have worked with contractors that the school system has not worked with. We had a pre-bid that was attended very well, 12 to 15 people there, from general contractors to electricians to pavement contractors, the whole realm. Plans have been in various plan rooms around mid-state area. The day before the project was set to bid, one of the two general contractors called and said, we're going to drop out. We can't bid on it. We don't have an electrician to give us a number. Okay? So I called the other contractor and he said, we're going to have to drop out too because we don't have an electrician here. So instead of going through the process of coming to a bid opening last Thursday and having no one show up and not getting bids, I called Mr. Davis. And so we can do two things. We can have no bids, we come back to the board and say we have no bids, put it back out to bid, or we can just extend the bid date out three weeks so we don't lose an entire month. Uh, so that's what we did. We pushed the bid date back to the 28th of July. I've called those original two bidders back and they said that they will be able to bid it now and said they will get an electrician. Uh, I've talked to two more. One of them is probably going to bid and the other one is 50/50, although they're not there to bid or not. So we will, we'll put it back out for bid, or not back out, but it's still out. We'll do another advertisement so everyone knows that the bid date has changed and to go from there. It's, uh, unfortunately Nashville's sucking a lot of people down there to work and there's, there's done enough work around from all over. It's a, it's a long way to get it done. It's a long one down there. So it's, uh, it's taken a lot of the workers down there. We're getting workers from Kentucky coming down to bid on projects, uh, which is, which is great for the workers. So I hope to come back next month because there's a much better, uh, bid.
We might want to talk about science labs. We've got to looking at the two that were in the worst shape and I thought that would be all we could bid. When you get looking at those.
Springfield High.
Yeah, Springfield High School, it's actually. When you get looking at them, you all look at them, the folks came up, they're all tied together basically with their infrastructure. And there's no way, if you do two of them, you're going to have two more that just ain't functioning. So it's going to be just a much more costly thing if you go ahead and just redo all four of those and get the infrastructure, the code for all of them. Otherwise, kind of just chasing a tail here.
For sure.
So I've asked them to develop plans for all of them.
We have, we came up to build measure those and sent those off to the casework consultant. And they've gotten the drawings back to us on those since we're going to have our engineers come up here next week and go field visit everything and get everything set to go out good for that one.
What is, what are the timelines for that?
Um, those guys will probably need two or three weeks or so to get their stuff done. So I'd say September, we'll have a number for that.
And then as far as you want to work on?
That's prob- the lead time for the casework is going to be the longest thing on. And I'll have to check and see what that lead time will be. Um, it could be a six-month project. To get started, I'd say it's, it would be a very close program because the, the first thing they're going to need to do is get those some middles into us for us to check the science casework and make sure that it's what it's supposed to be. And then they get to turn it on and go. That probably won't start to work until, I guess, a few weeks before the casework showed up. Because there's really no benefit to them to go in there and demo four to six, uh, four rooms out and just leave them blank and then have to wait three, four months for more equipment to show up.
What are they going to do with students? How, Dr. Osborne, she says she can work around anything that we have to do. What he's telling you is not going to disrupt the beginning, so it's probably going to get disrupted shortly after fall break. It'll be nice by now. Probably back in operation at our students' dorm until sometime after spring. That, that's the window that I'm looking at because it's funny.
Well, that's what I was wondering. We need to move two of those porters, Springfield High School.
I don't think she's going to need those. She's got a good schedule.
I was just wondering where she's going to put them.
She's got a plan. I trust her.
I trust her.
I've got one more project. It's a very short line on the Springfield High School sports fields. We are 99.99% done designing it. Uh, waiting to get the drawings back from the electric consultant. Uh, this is their busiest time of the year, as you can imagine. Uh, they promised me that by Friday, so that job will go out to bid next week. And say by the August meeting, we'll have plans for those too.
Madam Chairman, that's the place mine was for on the building.
Well, then you can just move on to your great.
The community is saying we are growing. We're projecting growth in student population by approximately 1% this year. Uh, our kindergarten numbers are way up and, uh, that's a good thing. It means more people are coming into our schools. That's a good. Um, I was really excited about the national board members. We do want to have them come back and do a, a representation of some type of plaque on the school board denoting their accomplishments. Um, one, I have the bids for Springfield Middle School. We've already talked about that. Uh, the TSBA Law Conference is July the 22nd to the 23rd. Uh, this is a conference where we are all told about all the new legislation that affects education. So I would be attending that. And I think, Mrs. Holden, you might have attended, but. Um, Budget Committee will be meeting tomorrow night and I think their purpose for meeting tomorrow night is to review the entire budget process for all of the departments and I would try to attend that as well. It starts at 5:00 in the evening. Our administrator, what we had in her training at the end of the week, 14th, 15th of July, it's, uh, something we do every year. There's one thing I will tell you though, it's going to be definite this year. We're going to have a speaker, it's a lady that lost her child at Sandy Hook. She lost a kindergarten. She is a phenomenal speaker and it's going to be about school safety. If you all get an opportunity in Kenton, it would be right after noon on the 15th, I believe. Uh, she, uh, averaged quite chilly, but it's also, you never, when you never think something can happen, then you're just not thinking. Because they have no idea, Sandy Hook, that anything of this magnitude could ever occur in this school. And she really brings out some good points on how teachers need to be aware of their surroundings and classrooms and, uh, things they can, just little things they can do to slow individuals down if they want to penetrate to it. So it's, it's really great insight for our administrators. Of course, school begins before we have another board meeting. Uh, I think August the first is our first opening day and we have teachers, uh, coming on, coming in that day and students the third, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, we will also not have any school in the fall because I think that's election day. I believe there's 11 of our schools approximately that have been used as polling places. And of course, election for, uh, the August election is the fourth of August. Early elections start, uh, early voting starts July 15th is the 30th. And if I may, Madam Chairman, for just a moment, uh, this is always a good time to reflect. Um, you know, I would reflect on my volume of work over my career. Forty-five years ago this week, I signed my first contract to teach school. It doesn't seem possible. It's been that long ago. But I don't want to take you all the way back to the beginning of my career. I want to look at what has happened in the last year in our district. And I reflect back and I look at Crescy Elementary School being opened in 1516. Central Office Building, it worked in, being opened in 1516. Department of Justice finalized middle, middle school and high school zoning. The Department of Justice completed all, completed all recording requirements that were required under the agreement. And a lot of folks think, well, we've already settled that and that's history. That's not going to be history for the next 30 years. Someone is going to have to send annual reporting to the Department of Justice to ensure that we are completing the requirement and set out in that group. The revised school board policy, which I'm, Ms. Mason is excited about, I'm excited about, our policies were way, way out of date in many cases and it's good to have them up today. We received a reading grant this year. One of just a few districts in the state that got that Read to Be Ready grant and, you know, not, not all school districts can say they got one of those, but our staff, Melanie Dickerson and lots of folks were hard to obtain that and we appreciate that and that's going to benefit our children. Uh, the middle and high school accreditation is a huge, huge thing. You want your children to go to an accredited school. One of the first things people used to ask me when they called me in Wilson County Companies that were thinking about moving there, who, who are your schools accredited by or are they accredited? So that's the fourth. Special ed grant, we've got that this year. Thank you for your hard work on that. Strategic plan, we're still in the process and we're going to have that thing completed and put to bed real soon. But a lot of work has gone in developing a strategic plan. We get the five-year plan, five-year, uh, facility plan with Ms. Holden's leadership and the board's devotion to that. They've come a long ways there. The Murrell Training Department Administrator has been a very successful program and continues. The East Rogers High School parking lot has been pretty paved and I call it lax and strapping. They almost didn't have a parking lot. We were down to the, I don't say nothing. We, last, the last county commission meeting, the county commission passed an $8.75 million bond issue for the projects that we have scheduled for this year. And thank you from the education team and everyone that worked on that, all commissioners. Uh, we had a healthy fund balance at the end of the year. So I don't really see a need for a tax increase this year. Looking ahead to 1617, we want to work toward bringing out one-to-one computers for our freshman class. That problem won't take place until, uh, second semester. It's going to take some time to get it up and going. We've completed our reorganization and our org chart for the Central Office. The magnet from getting that off the ground, off the veil, first bill is huge. That's going to take place. Additional pre-caves, but we want seven districts that got an additional pre-cave grant this year. So it gives us a total of 12, I believe, counting one we also funded the local, the city DPD program that, uh, that Zara Spox talked about, Ms. Cracker, adding Cooper Town to that this year. Kids are going to get the food they need. Uh, we are looking at moving our teacher center from its present location, just the teacher portion of, to the, uh, area where we now have the virtual school and moving the virtual school out to Springfield High School. Uh, that's something that is on the house for 1617. Uh, we are scheduled to be monitored, Jennifer, in federal, federal, especially this year. We're also scheduled to be monitored in federal programs this year. So that's something that we have no control over, but that's on our plate. Uh, we have some projects out there that we've already talked about that we want to have completed by the end of this school year. We are discussing with Trane, they'll be coming to do a work session at the next board meeting to proceed with a, a, an audit, investment grade audit, and we are excited about that. We're excited about what we'll talk, hoping this, hoping we need to come up with a time to cut that revenue. So we'll do that sooner rather than later. And it's exciting to the fact that we have two nurses being added to the budget this year, which will give us a full complement of nurses, one for each school. So those are the things as we look forward and as we look back, I think it's been a great year and I think next year it's going to be better. So thank you for listening and subject your questions at the next round of call.
Any questions? Does anybody have any old business that needs to come before us tonight? Any new business? I'm ready to comment on board members. Mr. Crockett, will you begin?
I do, thank you. Same here.
Mr. Kerr? I'm not at Miss Emma didn't know that we get to do this at the end of the year. I'd love to ask, did you have any comments?
Oh, I think I did.
Okay.
We expect something next week.
I will pass.
How we doing, Madam Chairman?
Well, I don't have any, I also, I was wondering, what should we do? Almost in front of my, so I was in front of my, say aye.